Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our last summer board meeting. Roll call, Mrs. Snyder.
Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Ms. Blauch.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bartow.
This looks like a new computer, too.
Here.
Here.
Excellent. Do we have any public comments on closed-session items?
Nope.
We have no public comments on closed-session items, so we are going to recess to closed. Thank you. Sorry. So much to do, so little time. Willy Wonka had a good quote. Um, we did not have any closed-session readout required. I don't have to ask anyone to sit down because you're all sitting. That's so nice. And...
Turn off their cellphones?
Yeah, that would be nice. I could say that. Put your cellphones on stun so that... Because sometimes what your cellphone sings is way more entertaining.
I'm silent, not stunned.
We'll stop and listen to it.
She's stunned when it stuns her.
We'll do our moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Bartow? What'd you... Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm very excited. My legs are... Oops, sorry. Alrighty. This is our last summer meeting. We squeeze it out as last as we can. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Whoops.
So moved.
Thank you. Before you... Someone seconds it?
Second.
Okay. After someone seconded it, I want the board to know that staff pulled item 15A8, so that will not be part of it.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Is the motion amended to include that?
Yes.
Is the second... Okay with that?
They pulled it. Different date.
Yes. Pulled it completely. So it's moved... It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey?
No, the other way around, but that's okay.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Yelsey, seconded by Mrs. Black. Thank you for noticing that. All those in favor approving the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Seven oh. And adoption of the minutes for July 16th and August 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This time it was moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Seven oh. Introduction of new staff. May I introduce?
Yes.
Mrs. McNabb, would you mind coming up to the podium and explaining why you get to be here today? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Liz McNabb, and I'm the district coordinator for Assemblywoman Cadi Petri-Norris, who represents this district in Sacramento in the California State Assembly. And we are honored to join you this evening to award the principals with certificates of recognition on behalf of the State Assembly. So we're so proud to partner with the Newport Mesa Unified School District to promote and recognize the hard work of these educators in our community. And it's also kind of especially neat for me because Mr. Ryan Longaker was my daughter's fifth-grade teacher. So I personally know one of the awardees tonight, so... And I congratulate them all. So thank you for allowing me to present these certificates on the Assemblywoman Petri-Norris's behalf.
Thank you. And procedure for those of you in the audience is Mrs. Olson's going to do her magic, and Mrs. McNabb will sit over to the side and present awards. So it's all good. Mrs. Olson?
Well, thank you very much. Well, it has been a busy spring and summer for us. And we are absolutely so fortunate to bring on board some new faces, very talented folks with extensive experience. But I'm going to start tonight with those who are very familiar with you and familiar to the audience, I'm sure many of them, as we introduce our new principals for this year. So first of all, as Michael Wagner is making his way up to the podium... So, you know, Michael walks in a room, everybody smiles. And he has such a calmness about him and a warmth that just is incredible. So in the past year, he's been acting as the principal at Back Bay Montevista. He's been part of the family there for 13 years in various roles, including that as a teacher and an assistant principal. I think it almost goes without saying that his leadership and commitment to the students and staff of that community is just absolutely incredible. And so we welcome him to the principalship of Back Bay Montevista.
Thank you. Thank you, President Matoye, school board members, Dr. Navarro, and members of cabinet. I'm so honored to be here today. It's a super proud moment for me. And I got my wife and one of my daughters here.
Excellent. Wait. Oh, perfect.
I think my other daughter had soccer tonight. I have two freshmen. A freshman is going to start college soon, and then a freshman in high school. And so a lot of high school going on in my life, all over the place. But I look forward to my new role as the leader of Back Bay and Montevista High School. I'm so thrilled. I'm so happy to have this opportunity. I thank you all so much. I have had so much support out of the people in this room that I could never pay you guys all back. And I really appreciate it. And I really hope I can live up to all your expectations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, also familiar to all of us is Teri Clark. And I'll have Teri make her way up to the podium. Teri has been with us for 15 years as a teacher, a peer coach previously. And many of us recognize her as the assistant principal at Newport Heights, Whittier, College Park. And I think I'm missing one, actually, Teri.
Lincoln.
Lincoln. And again, her experience and knowledge of our communities is just so valuable to all of us. But particularly this year is she is going to take a new role at Newport Heights as the principal. And we believe that it's going to be just a smooth transition from one spot to the next. And so welcome, Teri.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matoye, board members, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and community. I'd like to start by saying thank you. Thank you for continuously inspiring me to be the best leader that I can be. Thank you for cultivating the leader in me over my 15-year journey throughout Newport Mesa. And thank you for believing in me as the new leader at Newport Heights Elementary. I'm thrilled to have the honor of partnering with the teachers, staff, and community to cultivate a place where students build friendships, show their creativity, stretch their minds, and strengthen their skills, and build their foundations for positively impacting the community and beyond. Yesterday at our Welcome Back Staff PD, we focused on our personal and professional why. It was both illuminating and beautiful, particularly as a site leader, as well as for me, Teri Clark. Along with being a proud Newport Mesa principal, I'm a proud Newport Mesa mom. My why is my two boys. And at the end of the day, I wish for them to be proud of me and to see me as a positive role model. And it'll be a bonus if you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have family? Teri, do you have family?
I do have my family here. I have my husband, Brian. I have my two boys, Bradley, who's an incoming kindergartner. I have my son, Spencer, who is an incoming second grader, both at Woodland, and my mother and father-in-law, Tom and Jenny. They are very excited to be here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't see them. Did they stand up? No. Come on, stand up. Thank you. That's a kind order. We're second grader. Second grader, stand up. Second grader, stand up.
Okay. We have a whole family there.
Okay, good.
So moving along, and also, one of our own is moving up into a principalship. So I'm going to ask Ryan Lockhart to come on up. Ryan almost needs no introduction, as he is... He too has been with us for 14 years as a teacher. And I think most of us really recognize the work that he did as a teacher on special assignment, a TOSA, and the impact that he had throughout the district. And because of that work, he was then a principal with us... Or, sorry, an assistant principal with us at College Park and Mariners. And I guess we should say that you are returning home to California, which is where he was teaching. And so we are so thrilled to have Ryan step into that position this year.
President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and community, I so appreciate this opportunity to share how incredibly thrilled and excited I am. Before I say anything more, I'd like to acknowledge that my husband, Luis Torres, is here in the back. Also a school administrator, so our poor pets. I think we've just put a house key around their collar and taught them how to use the microwave. We're going to hope for the best. But seriously, to be opening a school for the very first time is incredibly thrilling. But to be doing that at a place, as Leona mentioned, where I taught, a place where I know there is such an incredible team in place, is just icing on the cake. So I am so looking forward to the work ahead. It's an honor, so thank you so much.
So we are very, very proud. And don't start the tears as they speak. But it's so nice to see people come up and watch them grow and move into these positions of leadership and to continue to work in that area and bring others along with them and build that capacity. So congratulations to all of them. So we also have a very nice balance, though, of bringing in an outside perspective. So I'm going to ask Eugene Quong to come up to the podium. He didn't know what order he was coming up, so surprise. So Dr. Quong has 17 years, again, extensive experience in education, and much of that has been as a math teacher. He has most recently... Yes. Most recently... We have a math position for you available, too. Most recent... Most recently, he served the community of Longdale High School as an associate principal. So his depth of experience really does go deep in many venues and topics surrounding high school programs. I think what is also unique is Eugene has been a WASC chair, which is not an easy position to hold, bringing people together to evaluate other school programs. So extremely beneficial to us. So he does have the reputation, and we'll see if it's true, of being dedicated and positive and very passionate about those he serves. So welcome very... Welcome. And Dr. Quong is our principal at Costa Mesa Middle School.
Thank you so much for that warm welcome. President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, distinguished guests. I'm extremely grateful and honored for this opportunity to serve in the Newport Mesa Unified School District. I'm really looking forward to partnering with the Costa Mesa Middle School and high school community as we continue to build programs and systems to help support all the students that we have in Costa Mesa. So I really appreciate this opportunity. Really grateful.
Excited to have... Do you have family with you?
My two girls, six and eight, and my wife are at home. We had a soccer banquet last night, so they have to do some homework tonight.
Because school has already started, right?
They started three weeks ago over at Luis Cardoys Elementary, so...
Well, welcome. Thank you.
I do want to mention that Eugene brought his new family, or part of it, of Jake Haley in the back.
Also a math teacher, yeah. And that his language capability is exciting.
Yes. He does speak Mandarin.
And there's a Mandarin program at Mesa, so that's... Perfect. Yes. So that's exciting, too.
So then joining us in the elementary realm is, first of all, we have Cindy Pedrosso. So I'll ask Cindy to come to the podium. There's a little bit of a pattern here. You can see 17, 18 years of experience. So Cindy also has 18 years of experience as an educator in multiple roles. She has a little bit of a unique background in the fact that she was a bilingual teacher, teaching Spanish. She was a resource teacher, and then a literacy coach. So it's just a really lovely collection of experiences in order to lead a school such as Wilson, which is where she is going to be our new principal. She's most recently been an administrator.
Yeah, Pomona.
Pomona. It says Pomona. It really does. I don't think I've ever... I don't think I've been asked for Little Grace. I have never had to introduce so many people. Cindy, you're not transferred yet.
She's having a heart attack over here.
So, of course, Cindy. But she was most recently an administrator for Ocean View School District for their early learning program. Again, just a really nice base that she's bringing to a principalship at Pomona. So she is noted for her dedication, and I'm sure you're going to notice her energy.
Thank you, President, board members, Dr. Navarro, and executive cabinet. So I had a little chat with Leona today, and she said, "Don't be nervous." Well, it didn't really work. But I am thrilled to be here, excited to be part of the Newport Mesa family, and of course, Pomona. And today, or actually yesterday, I had the pleasure of meeting my staff for the first time. And standing in front of them as a new leader was fun. And I was pleased, however, to share my story and my why for being in education and why I was here. And I thought it was a wonderful opportunity for them to connect and understand that building relationships is crucial for me and incredibly important to start there because I plan to build those relationships with my family, my students, and kind of start from there. I want to thank my family for being here, my boys in particular for putting on button-down shirts. My husband, Jimmy, in the back, who's videoing me. My two boys. I have Luke, who is the little man over there. He's going into second grade. And my oldest, Jake, who's going into middle school, which is also a very frightening time in my life. And just got a phone and also videoing me. So with that, I'm pleased to be here and be part of the team, and I look forward to a wonderful year. Thank you.
Well, moving right along.
Pick another school.
Yeah, I'll pick another school. So joining us, very excited to introduce everyone to Carol Furman. So I'm going to ask Carol to make her way to the podium. Ms. Furman, educator for 20 years. And again, she too has a depth of experience and a breadth. She's taught at the elementary level. She's been nine years as a principal, both at elementary and middle school. So certainly understands that vertical articulation that we need so desperately. She has successfully led in Ocean View, their magnet school, as well as a Title I school. So she... Again, we're talking about just great knowledge and skill set that she is bringing to our district. So she is coming from Ocean View, and she is known for building relationships through the work, yet focusing on student achievement. So welcome, Carol, as the principal of Harborview.
President Matoye, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and all of our wonderful guests. That introduction was amazing. Thank you. I'd like to first introduce my guests tonight. My mom, Marion, is here, as well as her very good friend, Jan, who is a former employee of Newport Mesa. So she's... She's lots of friendly faces in the room. If you haven't heard the story already, I'll tell it now, and you might hear it again. But my mom has been telling me over the past few weeks, reminding me that she thinks this selection was meant to be. And we call it the third Harborview because I went to a Harborview school, an elementary school down in San Diego County. And then I was a teacher at the Harborview School in Ocean View, and I'm the principal of the Harborview School here. I like to think that this was meant to be. And I am truly honored that you selected me for this position. I have been absolutely impressed by the level of excellence, the level of professionalism of the staff here at Newport Mesa, most especially my colleagues. The administrators in this district are so committed, so hardworking, and really, at the center of everything they do is student success, both academic and social. And I am so honored and excited to be joining this wonderful group of esteemed individuals. So thank you so much for selecting me. I am honored to be here, and I look forward to a year of success and excellence.
Thank you, and welcome.
So our next guest and introduction is Jennifer Heckert. So I'm going to ask Jennifer to come on up to the podium. Dr. Heckert brings with her 22 years of experience. Again, extensive experience. In fact, she has even had the role as a district-level director in the area of intervention systems and student achievement. And she had a desire to return and get closer to the kids and really make the difference by connecting there directly with a master's in linguistics and a doctorate in special education. How's that for a combo?
We're living life.
Just a wonderful combination. And it gives her extensive knowledge about inclusion, as well as PBIS and language and literacy and being culturally responsive teaching. So we really do welcome Jennifer. And I'm going to get this one right. Yes, Jennifer is the principal at Wilson.
We thought you had a co-person, right? Yeah.
President Matoye, and Dr. Navarro, and board members.
Thank you very much for reminding me. Executive cabinet and guests. I'm so happy and so thrilled to be here. And it's really true, what Leona just said, that I really feel that my goal and really journey was to be working directly with students. And I really feel that I've achieved that right now. And I'm so happy right now. I've achieved two things really recently, that I've got this wonderful, wonderful job where I have an opportunity right now to work directly with a wonderful community and wonderful staff, who I met all of them yesterday, started working on great goals together. And our theme this year is kindness begins with me and relationships matter. And we started talking about that already yesterday. And it was just so thrilling and exciting to be able to talk with them about that and just feeling the energy in the room. So we're all feeling very excited and very motivated. So I'm very thrilled, and I'm so excited and grateful for this opportunity and really looking forward to collaborating with you, everybody here, and the staff, and the community, and seeing all the great things that we can do for the students at Wilson and the community. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I have a 13-year-old son. He's starting school tomorrow, eighth grade, in Long Beach. So he's home getting ready. You know, I have to get your lunch packed. And I'm not going to make him do that.
Don't make him do that.
I'm going to help him out a little bit. So he's starting school tomorrow in Long Beach, so he's not here tonight. But I will definitely tell him about what happened. So thank you again for the opportunity.
I think the biggest challenge most of our new people had is pronouncing my name. So good job, everybody. Because it doesn't look like it sounds... And I've always said that the French language just puts letters in randomly that don't have the sound they're supposed to. So I really appreciate it, and you passed the first test. So that's very exciting. And Leona, on behalf of the board, we're really happy that we have now enemies with Ocean View. And apparently Long Beach. Yeah, they're not going to be speaking to us for a while. Yeah, well... Oh, well. We always go for the best. Oh, well. Thank you all, and welcome to you all. And you have a school to set up, so we know. So if you slip out when you need to, we are not offended. So we wanted to give you that heads up. So nobody's writing down, "Oh, you're leaving." As thrilling as this may be... Yeah. It's okay. Thank you. Excellent job. Can you breathe now? Yeah. You may do that. Yes, absolutely. Alrighty. Mr. Lee Sung.
Not sure how to segue. That was pretty cool. That is an amazing group of leaders. I think we did well. All right. Let's set this up. Okay. Dr. DiAgostino. Okay. So we are giving a safety update. And I want to say that I believe this is a great topic to start the new year because safety has to be on our minds. Unfortunately, this summer, there were some very tragic incidents that happened in other states. We had a Fourth of July surprise with a major earthquake in Southern California. So these are all reminders that we do need to stay vigilant in terms of our safety practices. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to review what we've done in safety and to highlight some of the areas that we've added some new safety practices. So Dr. DiAgostino and I put this presentation together, and we will share this with you tonight. So this is a slide I want to start with that I've shared with the board about a year ago. And I think it frames the work that we've been doing, that our first and highest priority is safety for all students and staff. And we do this by being proactive and prepared, and we work towards partnerships. And you're going to see some great examples tonight of some recent things that we've done to strengthen and deepen those partnerships. This is the next slide that I shared about a year ago, and the outcomes. So what does this mean, and what do we want to end up with? And one of the most important things is that first bullet, is that everybody feels empowered and not fearful. And certainly, it is very easy to start feeling the fear when we hear about what's happening in other places and the incidents. But we need to stay empowered by making sure we have our safety practices, and we practice them, and keep improving them. Also, that everyone has ownership and accepts responsibility. This is not Russell's job or Phil's job. This is all of our jobs. And finally, that we build that caring environment. And I can't tell you how pleased I am with what we've been doing in this district for many years, but we have taken it to a new level. What we did in our leadership advance, what we saw today with our teacher professional development, what's being done at our student level, and what has come out of a horrible situation with the Newport Harbor, the cup incident, the party cup incident. But we are a better district for it. And I think it goes right into what we're doing with safety as well. I want to just briefly mention this. And I've shared this in several presentations, including our safety committee with our association leaders, with our safety coordinators. I've shared this wherever I could. And people tend to, sometimes when they think of safety, they think of one item. And they say, "Schools should have metal detectors. Schools should have fences." And this is, I'm not kidding. Someone said, "We should have barbed wire around our fences." Okay? And they come up with all these things that they hear that people try to sell. But this study, I think, makes a very important point, that it's not one thing, that it is many things that creates a safe environment. And so we found this about a year into what we were doing with our safety. And I went through a group of leaders, and we started checking off the actions that we're doing in this district with what the study was saying. And we've covered all the bases. And we've covered all the bases, and we continue to improve in each of these areas. And you're going to see some examples of that in just a moment. So, what's new and also what's old? So, the areas that are new, we'll put in red, and some of the old ones and ongoing ones will be in regular black print. So, in the area of building a culture of safety, respect, and kindness, and again, I'm so pleased to hear our new leaders, our new principals coming up and talking about what they're doing with their staff. What we really have our focus and attention on is building kinder, more respectful, and overall more safe environments, not only in our schools, but also in our workplaces. So, here are some examples. First of all, Dr. Navarro has made it a standing item in our cabinet meetings that we talk about safety. We make sure that's always at the forefront. We also have spent a great deal of time in our principal meetings on safety issues. Challenge success, we brought that to the district, to CDM. It is going well. We got a request from Principal Scott that she wanted this to continue into the school year, and we absolutely supported that and their efforts. And I'm going to turn the next few bullets over to Dr. DiAgostino.
Good evening, President Matoye, board members, and Dr. Navarro. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Yes, I think it was very deliberate that Russell put the culture piece as our lead discussion item tonight, because really, we have talked about, we are making schools harder by making sure that they are softer and more approachable and relationship-oriented. And the people that we're hiring are driven by that vision for building relationships and collaboration and collegiality. The emotional behavioral support piece, as you know, has been a cornerstone for Student Services for some time. Our social workers, our psychologists, our school counselors, our social work interns, our psychologist interns, as well as some new positions we're continuing, considering for 2019, 2020, such as a child welfare intenence investigator, which is flying right now, which will be working in collaboration with Student Services. We will also be looking at behavior specialists and counselors at the elementary level. So, this idea of getting to know kids, this idea of connecting with kids, putting faces to names, knowing their story, this is a critical component for safety in the district. As you know, suicide prevention falls under Student Services as well this year. We have suicide prevention information on every single student ID in the district. That is seven through 12. And so, not only is that obviously for students, we're creating an awareness for students who might be thinking they themselves, self-harming behavior or suicidal ideation, but it creates this awareness on the back of every student ID and puts students in the know to help possibly connect other students to staff, et cetera. PBIS, we're continuing to be in the sustainability mode of PBIS, which is now prompting us to ask, where do we go from here? And so, with bullying prevention and our restorative practices training, this is the next level. We plan on doing some extensive training with our K-12 principal leadership meetings in the area of bullying, how we identify it, how we investigate it, how we document it. That's going to be critical for us this year in 2019, 2020. And our restorative practices training, which was a part of the leadership advance this year, was very well received, something that principals had been asking for. So, we have started to work with Sarah Coley in a greater capacity. As you know, she was hired because of her restorative practices expertise. And so, we will be working with some pilot schools, five pilot schools this year in the area of restorative practices training, specifically honing in on circles, effective questions, formal conferences, and things of that nature. And then, human relations activities and training and the Human Relations Task Force, those two pieces are, as you know, are critical. Student Services is working with Dr. Bauermeister in those areas, and we're very excited about the work product that's coming out of there.
This next category is enhancing our partnerships. And we have incredible partnerships. Here are some examples. Phil, I think this is.
Yeah, so I've got the first three bullets. So, as you know, we've had a longstanding partnership with the school resource officers and the school resource officer program. We continue to meet regularly with the school resource officers. In fact, Russell will be talking to you about a joint meeting we had about reunification. It was very refreshing to see both school resource officers from Costa Mesa and Newport Beach together. They're actually doing more, they're actually doing more work together across agency than we've ever seen before. The multi-training exercise with Newport Beach and Costa Mesa, we're working on those. We had a, this summer, Newport Beach SWAT team was at East Bluff Elementary and did some tactics and strategic practicing of how to access the campus, how to clear the campus. And we'll be talking more about this, but Costa Mesa did an extensive active shooter drill on August 2nd, which we're very proud of. And then, my third point here is the unified command planning, Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. But Newport Beach in particular is working very hard through Officer Dudash to work with us to create more planning in the areas of not just active shooter, but what if we have to evacuate? What if there's a tsunami? What if there is an earthquake? Like Russell said, we had one on the Fourth of July that was quite problematic for people in the inland empire and schools in the inland empire. We're not immune to that. So, the fact that our law enforcement agencies are working with us on this is quite refreshing, and we're very proud of that.
Something that we've been doing now for about a year and a half is we've continued to have these joint safety committee meetings. And Brett has been part of that, Pam has been part of that, NMA has been part of that. And it allows us to share safety items. They're a great sounding board. I've brought ideas to them to get feedback, and we have a commitment to continue into this new school year. This is something I don't think I've mentioned to the board, but it's been going on for many years. And it's a safety and health committee that they meet quarterly. And there is a representative from every school site that comes. Usually, it's the safety coordinator. And I will tell you, this is a great group of dedicated folks who are the person at the site who is saying, we have to take care of this, we have to replenish the emergency bin, make sure the drills are done, and working very closely with the principals. So, we will continue to do that, and I've been attending those meetings, and I find it to be a wonderful group of individuals. School Preparedness Academy is new. We have had two sessions right at the end of last school year, where we had at least one representative from every school site, full-day training with Brenda Emrick from the City of Costa Mesa Fire Department. And she has modified a training that she's been doing for years for our purposes for school personnel, and it has been very well received. It's hands-on. It gives folks not only great skills that they can use at a school, but anywhere. And so, we continue that, and we trained all of our site administrators and district administrators this past summer, and we will continue to do that into the new school year. In fact, I have spaces for all the board members, because I think one of you had asked to participate. So, I'm holding a space for all of you if you'd like to participate.
Thank you. Just give us the dates.
Another area that we have really taken advantage of is building that partnership with city emergency personnel, not fire department and police, but there is a safety person at the City of Newport Beach, Katie Ing, who has a fabulous operation. She's been there a number of years. We've been building that relationship. I've gone to tour their facilities and again, building the communication and sharing ideas. The same thing with the City of Costa Mesa. A gentleman there has recently been hired this past year, Jason Dempsey, who is also doing a great job with the city. So, we're definitely nurturing those relationships. I do want to share this. You're going to be hearing more about this, but the standard reunification method is something that was developed by the I Love You Guys Foundation. And the concept is, we need to have a standardized reunification. If we're trying to match parent to student, it shouldn't matter what school they go to. The signs should look the same, the terminology should look the same, the setup should look the same, the form should look the same. So, we have adopted this. We have official approval by the I Love You Guys Foundation to do this, and we are moving forward with that. What was so great about this was that a few weeks ago, our SROs were at a conference, and they discovered this foundation, and they came back and they said, we would really love to have you guys adopt it. And we said, we already are. Okay? But it's great to have the city and the personnel and the fire department all on the same page. And so, we're moving forward with that, and we're looking at even expanding that to further protocols that were created by this foundation.
That's great.
Physical environments with safety in mind. As you know, last year, so we're moving into year two of our standardized visitor management system with Raptor, we have been doing ongoing fencing projects, and when those are done, it's done with safety in mind. And Tim Holcomb and his staff do a fabulous job. They're not just redoing it to make it look nice. They're making it look nice, and they're doing it with safety in mind. And this summer, we have two projects that were started, one at Enson and one at Corona Del Mar High School, Middle School. With your support, we have added AEDs now at all of our elementary schools. They are installed, they are activated, and we have a contract to maintain them. We will be offering training for all of those sites to make sure that if anybody wants to voluntarily learn to be trained, they can do so. And as you know, we've had them at the secondary sites for a number of years. The next category is proactive and prepared, the training drills and supplies. So, as you know, we're mandated by law to do drills, but we actually do more than what's mandated, and we're doing them in various scenarios. We make sure that our emergency supplies and equipment are updated. We will continue to participate in the Great Shakeout, which is October 17th at 10:17. And something new is we have added training for all of our Emergency Operations Center team members with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So, we physically go up to Loma Ridge, which is the county emergency operations center, and we get to see their setup and we get to learn from them. And if we're all talking the same language, all experiencing the same training, we're going to be that much better prepared. I already mentioned the School Preparedness Academy. We will be doing communication drills. Dr. DiAgostino, Annette Franco, and myself will be planning a communication drill for the entire district. We're planning this for early October before the Great Shakeout. And when I say district communication drill, that's to every parent and every staff member. So, we're thinking big. We need to practice that process. Something that the board approved the last board meeting, that we are doing a pilot at three of our elementary schools to try out a curriculum that teaches the run, hide, fight in a different way, in an empowering way that's not going to scare kids, which is always a parent's concern, is, I don't know if I want my child being taught those techniques because it's scary. But that's exactly what HERO is designed to do, is to teach the skills through an empowerment lens, age-appropriate, the skills that they need to have. And Phil, I think you have the next.
You know, we've been working with Jeff Cugno, which is our field agent here locally with the FBI for some time. This year, we're going to, in Student Services, we're going to be applying the threat assessment protocols a little bit more proactively. And that is to look at those variables and to then apply them a little bit more widely, having more discussions with school principals. I really don't want to go into greater detail publicly about what we're going to be doing, but safe to say that with the threat assessment protocols, we typically get a, typically get an incident or some language, and then we respond to it by applying the protocols in terms of assessing it. We're looking at ways where we can be more proactive in more of a screening-type way to possibly identify students or individuals who might be at risk for possible behavior that we want to address more proactively. So, that's something where I'm working on in Student Services. We are also, the multi-agency training with the Newport Beach and Costa Mesa Police Departments, we mentioned that earlier, that's something that we're going to continue to do to grow that relationship. And then, again, the command planning, which is going to be very critical. What I found in the Costa Mesa active shooter drill that we did on August 2nd is the speed by which they approach a site. And so, that transitioning from the incident commander being a school official to being a police officer or a commander in the field is going to be critical for us to understand and know. And then also, how do we unify our command? Because we will still have a command staff with a site principal and district leadership. So, working in those areas to understand that a little bit better is our big focus for this coming year.
All right. And very quickly, communication. We have a safety website. Annette Franco has built a safety website dedicated just to that. We have an internal written communication system in terms of safety bulletins. I just sent that out to our principals and all of our administrators to make sure that they're reminded, even though I issued the bulletin a year and a half ago, it's got to be on the forefront of their mind. This hasn't changed. So, because we have a numbering system, I can archive them and send them out at the beginning of each year and add to them as necessary. We have a minimum standard for walkie-talkies. We cannot rely on one communication system. We have to have redundancy, so we still have the good old-fashioned radios in the event of emergency. We use Blackboard in the event of non-emergency type of communications, and Titan is our emergency communication system district-wide. And finally, this is a slide I shared before, but I just want to emphasize the last point. Again, it's not about hardening, it is about building that caring, welcoming environment. We're all stewards of safety in our school sites, and I believe we've done some great work, and we will continue to do great work, because safety, we can never be done.
Thank you. Mrs. Flora, you had a question?
I have three.
Okay.
Because I folded the pages.
Okay.
So, the first one is, the AEDs are there, they're at the high school level, I know they're on multiple sites, there are multiple places, so there's at least three or four of them.
Correct.
At the elementary schools, is it just one?
We just have one at this point, and they are in the multipurpose room.
Oh.
Multipurpose room. And we got a recommendation from the AED company, as well as our local fire department, that said, you want to put that in a place where you're likely to have the most access, okay, the greatest number of folks, and so that was the location.
Great, great, great. Second one is, who are the pilots on the?
HERO. The three schools, that is Kaiser, Lincoln, and Pollerina.
That's three. You said five.
Three. I'm sorry, did I say five? I meant to say three.
I said five for the schools that are in the restorative practices pilots.
Oh, okay.
Two pilots.
Thank you. Got my numbers mixed up.
And finally, this is just a comment. Do you, you know, it always cracks me up because, you know, you can send out emails, and then they don't respond. You think, did they get that email or not? And what's going on? And whether they read it? Do you track whether, can you actually, you used to be able to say, they've opened this. Can you track that they've actually opened the email?
I'm sure there's a way.
I mean, because, you know, sending it out and sending out an email.
Yeah.
The issue is because I know our principals are really, really responsible, but sometimes you get so much that you just don't see it, so.
Yeah. And you know, this is archived, these are reference materials. Some of this is stuff that has been embedded, but I will tell you, there's a couple things that I will say, I need you to respond back to me. And we literally have a little checklist, and we make sure that they're responding. So, on certain key things, I can't do this all the time, but certain key things, I will say, everybody needs to respond to me. And then Susan, my assistant, really does the checklist.
Thank you. Sam Anderson.
Thank you. This is great. I am excited about a lot of these updates. I just had a question about Raptor. I know last year, there were some difference on different school sites, like some were more lax, some were a lot more enforceful. Is that part of the safety email to the principals? Are there, everyone kind of more regulated now?
So, that's a good point. I don't want to hear what you just said, but that will prompt me to make sure that everybody is doing it at the standard level, because it should not be different. Okay? So, thank you for bringing that to my attention. This is the best time to revisit, these are the district protocols.
That was my question, too.
And sign in, and when an ID is taken and how that's scanned. We actually took a lot of time to put together a very detailed handbook that not only has the procedures on how to use the system, but how we, as a district, are applying the protocols in using the system.
Great. Mrs. Bartow. Did you have more, Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, but I can come back.
You didn't give me numbers. You didn't tell me. I have 14. No, okay. Go ahead. Mine's a short one.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that it was for staff is the same as for visitors, because I think that's one of the things, I know, like for me, going to different school sites, I realized I may be treated differently than a parent, or, you know, so that was part of.
Yeah. And that's by design. The protocol is, if we are district employees with a district badge, we do not need to present our photo ID and have it run through the system. What we do is we show the ID, and then we do sign in, because we have to maintain logs of anybody who comes to visit the campus.
Just so you know that that's not standardized either.
Okay.
Some places have to be signed in, and some places.
And you know, And you know, I will tell you, the temptation is, and we talk about welcoming, and this is the balance that I think the staff members at the front office struggle with. They know us, they know you, but they should be saying, would you please sign in, even though you're the board president or the superintendent? And I always go, I always show my ID, I always make sure that we sign in. So anyways, but again, this is a great time to make sure they're all following the standard.
And I say credit. I want credit. I was here. I want them to know, I was here.
Or if there's an earthquake, that's always my thought. It's like, what if I'm here, there's an earthquake, and no one knows to find me? I mean, really, those are the things that we all need to know. For, I just wanted to make sure, too, that we have like checklist, I love checklists, and I feel like we have so many things that we're giving principals, particularly at the beginning of the year. So like if a campus, particularly because we have so many new principals as well, to see, do they all have walkie-talkies? Are things systematized? If there's a parent who gets really aggressive, do we know overall every campus is doing the same protocol? Is there, is there a safety training that is in place? Because these are awesome, and they're more kind of like district-wide rather than site-specific, so.
We didn't coordinate this, but a checklist is exactly what we're working on right now. And I've actually had several meetings, because we took a sample checklist from another source, and we're crafting it into our terminology and our language.
Wonderful.
In fact, I have a meeting with Dr. Giacomo and Mary Graska, because there were some terms in their area that I need to clarify. That's the last piece, because I had a group of principals and assistant principals together to give input on that, and we're very close to using that for the first time this year. But it's a very detailed checklist, and it's exactly what you're describing, and I'd be happy to share it with the board once it's finalized.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And will there be a part of that that's ready for the first, the start of school?
It probably won't be, not for the start of the school year, but it will be issued early in the fall. And our deadline that we have given to all the principals to complete their school plan is October 15th. So that's the date that's on the checklist right now, October 15th.
Thank you.
Okay, your cell's turn.
So I have two. One, I was reading Wired, Blackboard had a pretty notable hack by a high school student. I think you guys might know about it, but just, I think that Awesome actually applied a patch. Just want to make sure that that's on like everyone's radar, that that's a, that Follett patched it, that there's a relatively, it's a relatively hackable software. So just a note.
Thank you for sharing. I'm not aware of that, so.
Okay. So yeah, just something to look into, since it's non-essential. And it wasn't like a data breach, he was just sending messages, so like it's not something that is like high alert concern, but something for us to make sure we're on top of. And then the other one was to see if we could have a tour of the Newport Beach Center.
Correct. Yeah. Thank you. And that is on my to-do list, you did make that suggestion. I actually mentioned that to Katie Ying when I went to visit, that expect a bigger group the next time we come. But I think, but it is, it's a fabulous facility they have there, and she's done a great job of organizing everything, and stole a couple of good ideas from her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful report.
Did any of our community comments have to do with the safety thing? Because I would just assume, is everybody okay if I do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Be on call in case Brett Doughty has something to do with safety, so I figured if he has a question, this is the more appropriate time to bring it up.
So Mrs. Motoya, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the community, I'm Brett Doughty, President of Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. We have come before the board at multiple times in the recent past few years regarding specific safety issues related to employees and their facilities. And we want to make sure that while everything that has been articulated tonight are really robust systems, and we've made huge strides as we operate as a district, we have to always remember the most basic issues are the ones that sometimes fall through the cracks. And so we've had employees come to the board and talk to you about rodents, talk to you about sewer odors in classrooms. They have talked about different pieces and parts, have reported it the right ways, have done everything that they should, and it took a very long time for those issues to be resolved. So we have areas for improvement. What we've noticed this summer is that there have been some different construction projects done, or things done on campuses. And unfortunately, we have discovered some asbestos in some small places, and it's being taken away safely and responsibly and professionally. But the problem was, is that we had teachers show up to do something in their classroom, and their classroom is sealed off, and they don't know why. And they are scared, and they don't have the answers and information that they needed, and we didn't know on the front side. And so there are some gaps here. So we have some room for improvement. We do a lot of things very well, but we also want to just remind everyone that the most basic pieces of facilities, when we're doing things, when we're doing it right, let's make sure that we keep people in the information loop so that they're not worried, they know that it's being done professionally and being done well, and it's getting taken care of.
Thank you.
I just want to point out that if there is asbestos present, we cannot wait. We must immediately address the issue. Mr. Holcomb, can you just give a little background on that?
Because one of the ways, one of the ways that asbestos is dealt with safely is to, the one way, of course, is to remove it, and there's an expense to remove asbestos. The other way that asbestos has been treated safely, since it was identified as something to be concerned about back in the 70s, is to leave it in places, it's basically called encapsulating it, so that it can't become airborne and therefore isn't a threat to people. And so, all types of government agencies, private companies, et cetera, because it would have cost far too much to remove all of the asbestos that had been used as building materials in buildings over the decades, have taken the approach of when it is safely encapsulated, to leave it safely encapsulated until such time that you have a necessity to disturb it, at which point you address it in the proper protocol to remove it. And so, as we sometimes do maintenance projects, or in the case of the most recent cases, we are cleaning after the construction and the air conditioning projects, some of our carpets were getting to the place to where they were, they were kind of coming apart as they were being cleaned. We stopped and said, okay, now we need to actually replace the carpet in this classroom, and we need to do it now, and we need to do it under asbestos containment procedures. So it really comes sometimes out of the blue. We have a plan for asbestos, dealing with it when we do a modernization project or something that we're planning for, but every now and then, we end up abating asbestos on short notice because we're doing maintenance that necessitates it.
But in that case, wouldn't a simple email or a text to the principal, by the way, we found this in room 14, and blablabla, and the principal would know, and then the principal could?
Remember, remember that we're.
Of course, they're not supposed to be there this summer.
Yeah. Just as you said, you know, over the course of the summer, we've been, principals have been coming back in the last short little bit, and teachers will be coming back. So staff does communicate with the site administrator, when the site administrator is available, about what's going on on their campus, including the air conditioning projects and the ancillary things that go along with that, such as carpeting and those types of things. It's, I don't, you know, I'm not one of those site administrators, so I don't know how easy it is, or the, how necessary a principal feels it is if they know the schedule is for the work to be completed before a teacher returns, to advise them.
I just didn't think, I didn't think the problem was identified as, don't fix it. I think it was, gee, the teacher might not have been flipped out if the principal said, oh, by the way, your room is getting updated for safety, you won't be able to get in it for a couple weeks. They're doing everything the right way, but you can't get in. I mean, I know that when I was a principal, I knew which teachers wanted to come back, and I was back off and on all summer, and they knew if I was on campus, they could be on campus, so it could happen.
I think, I think the issue is whether you're.
It's one-on-one circumstances.
Whether you get the opportunity to speak with the principal.
Right. And that's all, and I'm sure that's all Dr. Doughty was talking about. Mrs. Flora?
I guess the question is, is because I encountered this myself with the campuses over, when you're doing air conditioning. For example, I was having a couple of meetings at Montavista High School. It was very clear that I had no access, couldn't park in the parking lot because it was closed off, and there was no access to the site, because it's walled off. So on those campuses that were having air conditioning, I thought that the campuses were closed, that there was really no, you couldn't get into your classrooms. You couldn't get into anything. In fact, in Montavista, they were actually, when they came back, they were actually working, not even in the office, because there was very limited access, you couldn't get into your classrooms at all.
You're right. Particularly at our HVAC campuses, one of the things that Ms. Zeresny worked out with the site administrators of those campuses before the summer, was what the schedule of work was going to look like for the summer. Similarly, Mr. Bidnick put together a spreadsheet for each one of the sites, telling them the work that would be occurring, that was scheduled to occur, not the things that all of a sudden came up, but the things that were being scheduled to occur over the summer. And the purpose of all of that was because there's a lot of work that happens on a campus during the summer, and so it doesn't work to just drop into your classroom during the summertime. It needs to be coordinated, as Ms. Motoya mentioned when she was a principal, coordinated with a principal, those types of things, because there's just a lot of work that's happening on campuses in the summer.
So I guess, Dr. Navarro, one of the things that probably should go on that checklist that you're working on is, you know, the, when we're doing construction, safety is of major importance, because we don't want things happening with our employees when you've got, you know, safety hazards, with people on, you know, they're working, they're hammering, they're doing all sorts of things. So I guess the issue is that making sure that we communicate, that our principals communicate to the staffs that access would be limited, that you really, you shouldn't be on campus. I know we loved, teachers loved, when I was a teacher, we all loved to be in our classrooms during the summer, because it was sort of quiet, and we could get really repaired, prepared. But especially on those sites that are facing construction, even now when we're talking about the fencing, we really need to have some real clear protocols of access to the campus for our, for our staff's safety.
Actually, the protocol is that they do not have access to the campus, because when the contractor comes on, it's their campus, not ours.
Yeah.
Got it.
So it's really under their control. So they are told they are not to come.
Okay. Great. Thank you. For their safety. Okay, so that was our, thank you so much. You were busy, not that you're not ever, but we've made some great additions. Dr. DiAgostino is really working well with, hard to make sure that the whole child is taken care of, because if we have healthy children, that's a great deterrent to bad safety concerns. Alrighty, our informal reports, Dr. Navarro.
Yes, I just wanted to recap some statements I made at our opening workshop for our leaders when we had the classified and the certificated management team together. And it was great to see our new principals, they were there. But I, you know, I wanted to warn them that they're, they're working alongside, and you heard them say this, some extremely bright, ambitious, and seasoned, well-seasoned leaders, who really know their, they're experts in their fields. And my point was that, you know, we have all this great talent, but my other point was, is you get nowhere with great talent if you don't have great teamwork. And so my call to them was to remember, they're here for a mission, and their mission is to raise the bar for all students. And as long as we're all in the same boat, rowing in the same direction, we're going to get places. But if people start rowing in different directions, what happens to that boat? It starts going in circles, and you get nowhere. I also wanted to make sure that they knew the elements that are going to get us there. To focus on student progress monitoring, to focus on the elements that really create momentum for effective improvements in schools, such as capacity building, not pointing fingers or saying, but what do we know, how can we get better? Working together as a team, making sure you're doing everything for all students, and, you know, making sure that you're assessing your progress as you go along. And then, of course, working with, working with our most challenged and challenging students, and creating an environment on each of our campuses that is accepting and understanding, and moving away from excluding kids from classrooms as a disciplinary strategy, because those kids who are not in class are not learning, and the state's not going to give us extra money to make up those last minutes. So we have a huge challenge, it's not easy, but it's important that we're all focused in the same direction. And I think that that's going to be something I'm always going to be reminding them all year.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Olson, sorry I miss you sometimes, I get my mizzes and misses up, messed up all the time.
You didn't put me at a different school, like I did. So thank you for that. So yes, again, I'm excited to share with you something a little bit new that we did this past, this past summer to start up, and that was our new teacher training. And I have to tell you, it, one, it was a wonderful example and demonstration of collaboration amongst all of the departments. Vanessa Galey did an amazing job putting things together alongside with Megan Brown, and that's where it started. And then it kind of went out from there, what do some of our folks need? And so we had a little bit of ed tech, we had a little bit of student services, a little bit of special education. It was just a really great two days for the first time that we've done this in a very long time. We used it, part of the catalyst behind this was, and you'll see, you see in tonight's consent items, is the MOU for an orientation for our certificated staff. So the MOU is with NMFT to provide an orientation so that they can have contact with members directly. We, we do it from the HR perspective in our focus, and that's what I'll just speak to directly, is that for, our purposes vary, we modeled it after our successful CSCE orientation. So talking about what it is to be a good employee, talk about the benefits as an employee, watching, my, being mindful of professional, your professional reputation, which you might recall that document that we've shared in the past, and the board policy of professional standards. So just some of those little nuances that, to take the time to talk about, what does that look like, what does that sound like? And then NMFT had their, their time and spoke very well about how it all works together. So it was a really, really wonderful first experience with that, so we look forward to doing that in the future. But thank you to all the departments for working so hard together to make that happen.
It was fun. Thank you for inviting us to lunch. Thank you, Megan.
Great.
Good evening. Ms. Zeresny is with her team, very busy at our schools that are receiving HVAC even late into this evening. The projects have gone very well. This is our most ambitious summer yet, including seven schools, one of which is a middle school, which is really, in essence, the equivalent of doing eight elementary schools in the span of a little bit over 50 workdays. So there's a lot of work that's been going on, and it's gone, as I say, very, very well. We did end up with a new contractor, because we added a couple more schools this year than we've had before, contractor that hadn't worked in our schools before and hadn't worked with us. And he has struggled a little more than some of the other contractors with the projects. He's very close to completing, but they're still out there following up on him, trying to make sure that he finishes up the last few things that he has at some of his schools. But also considering that a number of our schools have had new principals that we met earlier this evening appointed, that have had air conditioning, as they've assumed their new responsibilities, that has gone very, very well. The communications between the facilities office and the new principals has gone fantastically well, and considering all of what's going on, I'm very pleased that it looks like we're going to be in great shape for the start of school next week.
Okay, everybody knock on wood.
Okay, everybody knock on wood.
Yes.
Well, as a part of our end of year process, your auditors are here, and I say your auditors, and I do that on purpose to highlight that special relationship because they report directly to you. And so they should be meeting with the board president here, I think, this week.
Tomorrow.
Good. And it's a team of, you have a team of four there who's been here all week, and they will be here all week, and they're doing top to bottom, look at, at everything in the world, like here.
Oh, good.
So that's a good thing. And so anyways, it's a, it's a big job, and, and you can be assured that your interests are being protected and looked at by some professionals that do very good work.
Do we have a special area that we're emphasizing this year? You know, in the past, we've had, we've looked at, you know, specifically related to maintenance and operations, or we've looked at some of the other, some of the departments specifically.
This year, we're highlighting ASBs and taking a look there, spending a little bit more time.
Spending a little bit more time.
Yay.
Well, we thought that was every year.
No.
Well, we haven't found a, you know, a fail safe or whatever. Perfect major, you know. I don't think we ever will, because it is that organic ASB, and it's wonderful to have that support.
And I have a human relations update, kind of what we did on our summer vacation. And as you know, Russell and Phil talked about the human relations being a bigger part of a dist- or a smaller part of a larger district-wide safety initiative. The Human Relations Task Force had a mission of creating safer, more respectful, and kinder schools. Some of the things that happened over the summer, actually just prior to summer, June 7th and 11th, all the juniors and seniors from Newport Harbor High School visited the Museum of Tolerance. On June 24th and 25th, so that was the Monday and Tuesday that school was out, we had teachers from Cornell Amar, Enson, and Newport Harbor visit the Museum of Tolerance to examine racism and prejudice around the world with an emphasis on the history of the Holocaust. On June 29th, 30th, and 31st, we had 40 student leaders from Cornell Amar and Newport Harbor attend a three-day workshop presented by the ADL, providing them tools to combat bigotry and hate. And at our leadership advance, on August 11th, the district principals, directors, assistant superintendents, the superintendents, and yourselves attended training on implicit bias and becoming an ally. And the kind of overarching theme of that training day was creating a culture of kindness. And I picked up on a, something that Dr. Navarro said a little bit earlier, in his message to all the district leaders about raising the bar, one of the things he said that a focus this year would be on creating an accepting and understanding environment. So again, that's a focus on, with our district for this year. August 26th and 29th, which means yesterday and Thursday, all four of our comprehensive high schools, Cornell Amar, Costa Mesa, Estancia, and Newport Harbor will be receiving training, the same training. I know we didn't think Estancia was, but they did jump on the training, they are having it Thursday afternoon. So all four of our comprehensive high schools are going to, are going to be receiving that training. As you know, on Tuesday, July 16th, as I was traveling the Alaska Highway, the Human Relations Task Force presented their Phase One recommendations to you. Many of these, I think actually all of these are on those recommendations. The task force will be meeting again September 11th to continue the work on refining these recommendations after receiving input from the cabinet and the principals. We'll also be bringing teachers and students to that meeting to share out to the committee about the trainings that they've been to. One of the things we talked about at our last meeting is, there are two important components of this that have to be vetted through cabinet and through our principals, time and money. So all of these things are good things, but there's a finite amount of time. So we have to leverage the best things and the things that fit the best for our campuses. So we're going to be taking those recommendations, running it through cabinet and the principals, and then bringing it back to the committee. So that will kind of be our work moving forward. Our next community workshop will be Wednesday, September 18th, and the topic will be conflict resolution and de-escalating conflict. So that's a pretty good topic. And another topic, Pursuing Victory with Honor, our yearly training, will be October 14th. Again, we'll have Rob Weigod, the Commissioner of HAF Southern Section, coming out to work with all of our coaches and parents. So October 14th, Pursuing Victory with Honor.
And it was September 18th for the conflict resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my report encompasses what happened today. But the reality of it is, the work that we've done really since the spring of last year culminated in today's activities for teachers. Every single one of our, our certificated teachers participated in a professional development, content-specific professional development today. It's a huge undertaking, and Dr. Navarro mentioned teamwork, and Leona mentioned collaboration. We just keep getting better at it, and we kind of force ourselves to do things differently. And one of the, the PDs that I'll highlight today is the elementary PD, which was actually a mini-conference that was put on for all of our K-6 teachers at Costa Mesa High School. It was a collaboration between student services, ed services, really bringing together both the social, emotional, behavioral aspect of things, as well as the academic, really leveraging our third year of adoption of, of language arts and math materials. But the focus of today was really academically around language arts and, and text. The amount of work that goes into pulling off a conference like this is enormous, and we really modeled after something Jennifer Mishney brought into the district in the Digital Fellow days. And she was integral, along with Dr. Sur, Sarah and her team in, in putting this together. All K-6 teachers went through five different sessions and also had a keynote speaker, which I'll talk about in a minute as well. Some of the titles, I think, speak to the, the training they received. Ed Tech did a training called Getting, Gettin' Digi With It. We also had our, the other important part about this day was, it was really teacher-led. We had teacher leaders, all of our TOSSAs, as well as we recruited some other teacher leaders in our district to do these hour-long presentations and developments for teachers. Another title was Read It, Speak It, Write It: The Power of Planning for Performance Tasks, since that's a big portion of, of what we'll do with assessment this year. Student Services brought in a behavior piece called Breaking Bad Behavior, which was great. And then also there was a component around speaking and listening called So You Think They Can Speak: Using Academic Language in the Classroom. So it just gives you a flavor of getting people on the same page, K-5, in those areas. Also tying it all together with our theme of relationships, social, emotional, and academic, we did have a keynote speaker come in. Dr. Hector Montenegro came in and really brought both the social, emotional aspect of teaching and the academic, both very important, really to the forefront of people's minds, and spoke about the enormous responsibility we have as educators, and specifically as teachers who touch and see those kids every single day, to create that environment that's safe for kids on an emotional level as well as an academic level, to both take risks and learn. And when I talked to a few people who heard that, a few things, a few words came out, one, it was very practical, but also inspiring. And it really did do a nice job, I think, bringing our focus together of relationships as well as achievement.
I just, I, I got a text earlier in the day from a teacher, and her response was, "The keynote speaker today was better than fantastic." And I, it was, and I went, "There was a keynote speaker today?" So that's, you know, unsolicited compliments are the best in my book.
Yeah, and that's really the feeling that we, we got from teachers in general. Obviously, always things to improve, but the teams that put it together, both from our support staff, classified, as well as ed services, student services team, it was just an amazing day for teachers. Secondary, real quick, we kicked off the history social studies adoption with implementation work. We've also kicked off the illustrative math high school adoption process, starting to build that lens, and then really are starting to focus in again on the ELA, ELD aspects for secondary in, in that realm, and then science is still building and learning.
And the kids haven't gotten here yet, and the teachers are getting tired.
So this is our board meeting right before the start of school. So I think we'd be remiss not to acknowledge the work that's done during summer. And I always like to share this story because I think everyone can relate to it, at least the 12-month employees. I still have family and friends who say, "Oh, were you off for the summer?"
I know.
And you know, you know the dirty look? That's the moment you give them the dirty look, because during the summertime, there's tremendous amount of work and people that get things ready for that first day when our kids come back. And all the hiring that HR did, not only with the leaders, there are employees throughout our ranks that are being hired throughout the summer. M&amp;O, getting all of our classrooms ready, the deep cleaning that goes on, and, and making the grounds look great. You heard Tim talk about the construction projects, absolutely amazing, what they've undertaken and, and will accomplish. John talking about the PD that's happened and the amount of planning and preparation, not only for this week or today, but for the entire year. Also, our principals, our site principals, getting their sites ready, and all the preparations and the checklists that they have to go through to get everything ready for the first day. Our IT department and our educational technology department, all the work they do on the backend that we don't even see that world, to get things ready for, for folks to have the first day of school. Our business office, closing the books, that is the busiest time of the year for them. And let's not forget our clerical folks. They are the backbones, they get all the details and everything taken care of. So it truly does take an amazing team, this is amazing team here, and they're ready or not, we're going to be ready. Here they come.
Here they come. Thank you.
Good evening. So I want to focus on a couple things where student services has really, you know, gotten our nose under the tent, so our whole, the whole camel's inside now, and that was through the leadership advance that we had. And I know a lot of you, most of you were able to attend the first day, and then the second day, so the first day, we also had a restorative practices presentation, it really laid some foundation for the year of, of where we're going with, with kids. And, and then day two was really a lot of student services, and we were able to focus in on, under special education, our informal dispute resolution. So we're trying to work with families before things escalate, and how we do that, and really where the principal's role is in that. And that seemed to go over really well, people seemed excited to be able to use that. We talked about multi-tiered systems of support, spent a lot of time with the site administrators, especially on the role of behavior and social, emotional learning in those tiers, and knowing that we have more work to come, but that the district, the board, has really supported a lot of resources in this area, and so we thank you for that. Then I was able to do some ti- spend some time with Leona, and we co-presented on complaint process, and, you know, really talked about complaining versus complaints, and again, kind of using that tiered structure of, of how can you be proactive in setting things up to avoid complaints? And then what happens when you do, they do get to that level, and having people feel equipped to deal with that. We also did training on trauma in the second, it's kids who come in with trauma at the secondary level, and I think that was very powerful, and her, and we've already, Kristen Henry did that one, and she's already kind of gotten the, "Hey, can you come and present that for us? Can you come and do this?" So we know it's an issue that will make a difference for kids, because if it doesn't make a difference for kids, we don't want to spend time on it, and we know this well. And then for the elementary principals, they got a preview of the presentation today that was given to all the elementary teachers on the breaking bad behavior in classroom. And we've heard, you know, we've heard how disruptive kids can be, and, and how they impact learning, not only for themselves, but oftentimes for their peers in the classroom. We've heard teachers saying, "I, I don't have the tools to deal with some of these things." So we were thrilled, as John was saying, it was really a collaborative effort, and I think this is our first time being in front of elementary teachers. So we had our two special ed behavior specialists, our inclusion specialist, and autism specialist. And they led, between, among all of them, they led 14 sessions, and everybody did, I think, in terms of how that, how that worked out. But we were just very excited to, you know, like I said, get that nose under the tent and be in there. Now we're here, now you can't get rid of us. But we're really excited about what's going to happen for kids in, in those areas.
See, and people think we get summers off. Yeah. All righty, moving along. Community input on action items. Okay. That's my cue. Yes.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on action items, consent calendar, resolution consent calendar, discussion action calendar. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per item. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, or members of the public may request that a specific item on the consent be removed to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on meeting video record. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Dr. Doughty? Somebody turn the air on or something.
So hello again. There's a handout that I'm passing across for all of you on the board. This is a publicly available document through CPRA. If members of the community are interested, they can contact me about it to expedite the process. These were related to items that you had on your closed session schedule earlier today, related to an unfair labor practice that we filed. And this is also related to-
Is this on the consent calendar or the discussion?
This is also related to the attorney who is involved with this, is, his contract is up for ratification tonight. So these are kind of combined together.
It was on closed session, wasn't that on closed session? And that would have been discussed then?
Then I can hold my comments until the end of the evening.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, so, Ben, hello, I've got a job to do. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
There's no other comments?
There were no other comments. So moved. Second? With the, with the- Removal of 15, yeah. 15A8. Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Black, amended by removing 15A8. Any discussion? All those, eh, yes. I saw this, oh, I'm sorry, there's buttons, look at all the buttons. Mrs. Barto, you didn't have a button, but you had your mouth open like you were going to talk.
I want to talk about, now the numbers moved, so, one second, the crossing guards at Newport Coast.
It would be? Crossing guard. Thank you. 15A9?
So easy, right after the one that moved out. So just because I get questions on this all the time from the community, I was just hoping for some clarification of how our relationship with the crossing guards work, just for the community's edification.
Sure, sure. So crossing guards, as, as we normally think of them, are to cross the street, the public streets, and we don't get involved in crossing guards to cross the public streets. That is responsibility of the two cities. We still use the term crossing guard because it's the same type of behaviors that this individual does, it's the same company, actually, that the cities often hire, but this is actually with regard to a situation at our parking lot at Newport Coast Elementary School.
at Newport Coast Elementary School. It's on our property. And because of the stream of traffic that comes there at that particular school, the foundation at that school said, "We think that it would be good to have someone stand out here and help to direct the traffic as it's coming into the lot and around the lot to keep students safe." So, the district has employed this company for, I think, somewhere around eight to 10 years now for this service.
Thank you.
Perhaps you can get a copy of the, just show how the flow goes because it's such, it's so weird how people enter the egress and ingress of that. Just get us, you know, a site plan because it's a weird way that they get in and out of that.
Yeah, because people are always like, "Oh, how come their, you know, how come their foundation's paying?" You know?
Yes.
It's a different thing.
Because they're on a hill, for one thing, the sight lines off the hill.
And they had to make a road to...
A number of issues.
If you try crossing Newport Coast, you'll know why.
At that time of the morning. And I have no idea whose light came on first. But Mrs. Yelsey, I haven't heard from you, so you can go first.
I just wanted to make a comment about be, at 15B12, approving the contract with the Freedom Committee of Orange County. And I'm just so proud of the district for continuing to do this. And for some people who may not know how this started and as part of this agreement, we first did the Living History Program, which is what the Freedom Committee is involved in at Cronin Omar High School. They've been doing it for, I think, 18 years now, under the direction of Denise Wyland. And Denise was employed at the time at Cronin Omar. Her position was then taken away. And so, we didn't want to-
Eliminated. It wasn't taken away.
Well, she was not a district employee. She was the foundation was what she did. But anyway, we didn't want to lose that program. And she really wanted to continue it. So, that's when the district took it on to have a program throughout the district, not just at Cronin Omar High School. And I'm really proud to say it's at every high school and every middle school now, at various degrees. But it's growing at all the schools. So, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to highlight, even though we work with the Freedom Committee, and that is all the veterans that come in, Denise really runs the show at all the schools. And she does a tremendous job. And I just wanted to highlight that because it's an amazing program. Not many other school districts do a living history program like this, where our students get to really meet with World War II veterans. And they're, you and far between now, but a lot of them are involved. And as well as current wars up to-
Active duty person, yes.
And it just reminded me, I was on Sunday at a speech where Gary Sinise was speaking. And I don't know, if you don't know, you should look it up. All the thing, he was Lieutenant Dan, everybody knows. But he's been very involved with our military.
Amazing, by the way.
And World War II veterans and builds houses for quadriplegics and takes Gold Star families to Disneyland every year. I mean, he really does amazing things. And he made a comment that he doesn't feel there's enough, enough teaching about World War II in our schools anymore. And I just think we do a good job of that. We could do better, but I think this is a huge part of the program because these 10th graders who are part of this, at least at Cronin Omar, different ages at different schools, remember this for the rest of their lives. So, I just wanted to highlight that.
But just in case your uncle so-and-so wasn't part of a war that you could talk to, you get the opportunity.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
And it's, they're delightful people and their comments back are such like, and they will, if you ask them, if a child asks them the question, they'll answer the question. And then they looked at me and went, "Was that bad to say? Was that too graphic?" I said, "No, it was real. It was real what happened to you." So, that's, and you didn't use bad words or things like that. It was, but it was like, "Well, I said I was shot down. That could scare them." No, that's okay.
And it really is a culmination of individuals from the Costa Mesa area. Jack Hammond was instrumental in starting it. And they don't only go to our districts, but they go across. And they're reaching 20 and 30,000 students a year. And it's an amazing program. And it's not, even though it was focused originally on World War II, again, there are, we have veterans that go in and speak to kids from all over. And we've been very fortunate to have some of the oldest living World War II vets. But it's amazing, the cross-section that participate. And our own board member participates as part of the member. Dave Brooks is a member of the Freedom Committee.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I had a question about 15C1. I was just wondering, it's under a workers' comp consultants. And it sounds like we have, we've been working with this group for like a decade. And I was wondering if we were using them temporarily as we're looking for a Russian manager or what that process looks like.
You are correct. We have worked with this company for quite some time. I will share with you, in the last couple of years, many of our, this, this particular agreement is surrounding accommodations for workers' comp. So, when we are trying to return someone to work. In the last couple of years, we at, within HR, as well, working with McGill, have conducted many of those on our own without the assistance of a consultant. A consultant comes in when we need somebody who is just, has a little bit more expertise than we do and mediates amongst both. So, we have not used them very much. In fact, last year, we used them. I do believe that the invoice is $3,000. So, we do not anticipate using them very much and utilizing and building our own skill set as much as possible and just bringing them on the extreme cases.
Okay. What kind of like, I was trying to figure out, like, what would they help remediate? Or how would they?
So, within an accommodations meeting, what you're looking for is, what are the restrictions or limitations of an employee? Sometimes because of workman's comp, sometimes just because of just unfortunate situation. And so, when they bring those limitations and restrictions to you, then it is up to us to see if we can reasonably accommodate. And so, we want to make sure that we are looking at all of our options. Sometimes we don't agree. And when we don't agree, we bring in someone from the outside to try to mediate between us.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, we have, it was moved by Mrs. Flohr and seconded by Mrs.?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Oh, you did have one more. Okay.
I was noticing for 15A10, and I don't know where this is necessarily directed, but that on here, we have a two-year contract for Spencer Covert. And I was just wondering if, one of the things, I think, you know, I have a lot of questions about legal services. But if, one thing I would like us to maybe consider is starting to do one-year contracts for a variety of purposes. But then I just wanted to know, too, it looks like there's a $500,000 max. And then over three years, I mean, that would be over a million dollars. So, what, why is that such a high amount? What would we anticipate that being? And then, you know, potentially? And then why do we have a two-year rather than a one-year contract?
So, one of the reasons why we have a two-year agreement is because it's been the practice in the district to enter into two-year agreements generally with regard to legal services. So, it's certainly an option that the district could look at. Every agreement that we do, particularly with a firm like Spent, like Parker &amp; Covert, that has been district's counsel for many, many years, it's more board items, more times to make sure that we keep counting up to date and we have a purchase order in place. It's just more mechanics involved. But that's something that we certainly could look at if the board would like us to. The amount, one of the reasons for the amount being a little bit higher maybe than it has been in some past years is because we, there is, a couple of years ago, when the district had an accident that involved OSHA, we brought in an OSHA-specific attorney underneath Parker &amp; Covert. And so, that particular attorney's services are also included in the grand total amount for this. And some of it is very routine, but there are a number of filings. It's very much like a court process. So, there's a whole lot of notes that we receive that have to be filed, have to be responded to. And so, there's hours that are involved in all of that that was not part of the district's prior experience, prior to that.
Can I just piggyback on that? Unless, so, if, just because we have a two-year contract with them, if we decide we want to use someone else, we can just use someone else, correct?
Well, yeah, the contracts allow for termination if the district chose not to do it. They're really, in essence, on-call, available services.
Yeah, that's what I-
So, staff as well can choose to use the one particular attorney or another based on their expertise. The district has different law firms, basically, on the bench, so to speak, available for its legal needs.
So, we're not restricted to using them if we decide we want to use someone else?
No, but you do-
We have a list of other people.
And we don't have to use all of the amount. We can use something significantly less.
And you also, one of the benefits to having a two-year contract is you cement the cost for two years. Whereas if you go to a year, you're going to be probably paying a higher rate.
Well, that's, it actually changes. That's, that was part of my question for asking because the two-year contract has a rate increase. So, there really isn't a benefit for us having a two-year contract because as part of the, as the contract is written right now, it's bumped up for next year. That was a concern that I had.
Now, in this case, it really is a matter of practice. It's a practice lots of districts use. It's a practice that this district has used. It's, the law would allow us to go out to five years. Two years has been a nice number that says we don't do it too often. We don't do it, you know, too infrequently either.
Thank you.
Mrs. Black?
Yeah, and I just wanted to point out that in most all of our contracts, not everyone, but that we go on retainer-type, you know, contract with any business. But we always put in "not to exceed." So, we, you know, if we do, we have to come back to the board and for unforeseen thing. And I like that in most of our contracts, you know, unless it's a finite, you know, bill. So, I do, you know, appreciate that, just pointing that out. And they went up $10 for just the partners for the 20, 21-year. The rest of the rates remained the same.
Mrs. Flohr?
How many attorneys, firms do we have? I mean, I can name off about five or six. And do they all have similar contract provisions?
I don't know the exact number. I could find out for you. I would say that's about right, wouldn't you, Mr. Trader? That around a half a dozen firms for different types of specialties?
Yeah, and they're, and basically, my understanding is when we approve them, they're basically a two, they're usually a two-year contract. Some of them are three-year. And they're, again, like, they're for specific things, like, we have a special, we have Newman, who's really great, and Larson, and we have LLR, what is it? Loyola Romo and-
Go for it, Mrs. Flohr.
So, we have about a half a dozen that we utilize on, basically on a case-by-case basis on who's the best one to represent us in that area. Because that's their-
Who's expertise?
That's correct.
We're not looking for the cheapest in this case. We're looking for the-
Best.
Do we have a list of?
Yeah, we can get that.
I love lists.
We don't publish a list. We don't have one sitting on a shelf somewhere. It's not something that would be difficult to create.
But if it's like six firms, that would be easy.
It wouldn't be difficult to create.
You have them all because we've approved them throughout the year.
I can go through and do that.
I would like to request, again, we've spoken about it a few times, but I would like a list of all of our attorneys that we, all of the firms, and a litigation log. So, what are the open matters? What are we looking at? Because I feel like, particularly when we have three that are ratified, these are things that were already kind of decided before we got to them. So, you know, the one that's on here for Bergman is for one year. I don't know that it benefits us to do contracts. So, I, yeah, I would love a litigation report.
With regard to the latter part of what you just spoke to, and maybe Dr. Navarro was going to speak to it. With regard to litigation matters, there, you have occasion when counsel can speak to you in closed session about litigation matters. But otherwise, we don't typically keep a matter that would be a public record available to folks regarding the litigation that the district-
I think it could be a closed session item. I think with, so-
So, you, we did give you an active litigation item previously, recently.
I don't know that that was all of it. And it wasn't all of our firms that were-
It was, it was the active litigation regardless of which firm it was.
Oh, okay.
So, it was active litigation. You have to have an attorney in there who presents it in closed session to you. It could have been one of, it could have been any attorney that we worked with. It was, it was, it was the attorney that we brought in. And they discussed all the, all the open cases with you.
Okay.
Perhaps we can talk about it again in closed. Yeah, I think there's more information that needs to be shared.
They're just not confident. So, you're not, you know, we need to present it. They're confident that we're, you know, not disclosing all of it. So-
They believe. Yeah.
Okay.
They just haven't, hopefully, you never have to hire an attorney because we'll see what the God did.
Seeing no more lights? It was moved by Mrs. Flohr, seconded by Mrs. Barto. All those in favor of approving the consent calendars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, 7-0. Now, we have the resolution consent calendar. And this is a roll call vote on the entire list.
Move adoption Resolution 2020819, Establishment and Maintenance of School District Site Revolving Cash. Adoption of Resolution 030819, GAN limit for 2018-19, and estimated GAN limit for 2019-20. Resolution 040819, Authorization to Close All District Depository Accounts at Home Street Bank and Transfer Remaining Funds to Farmers and Merchant Bank.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And does anyone need Mr. Trader to discuss any of these? Nope.
No.
Okay.
It's, it's clear on here.
Very simple.
I was just re-familiarizing myself with it.
That's right, I was watching, I could hear the gears turning.
Yeah.
All those in favor of approving the resolution consent calendar? Oh, it's a roll call vote. Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flohr?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Snow? I'll get this job nailed by December. Just, I guarantee it. Alrighty, now the fun part. A recommendation is Mrs., Claire, you are, you came. I know, this is a recommendation for the public hearing for the Personnel Commission appointee, Mrs. Clark. Do I need her to talk or can I just open it up?
Just open it up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The hearing is open. And Mr. Wayman is in the audience.
Very patiently.
Already, there are no comments, no cards, no consent. The hearing is closed. That was a thrill. Thank you for sitting here all this time. So, we opened the hearing at 7:48, 9:00, and closed it at 7:49? Okay. And our next step is a vote. Next board meeting, because we can't-
No, it's 18.
Or the next day is the vote. Uh-huh. I told you, I'll get this job. It's what happens when you give me three weeks off.
Move approval to reappoint Mr. Kenneth Wayman as the board's representative to the Personnel Commission.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Flohr and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Are there any comments other than, "Thank you so much"?
Thank you so much for continuing to serve.
Yes. Alrighty, and this is not a roll call vote. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Does Ken want to say anything?
Yay. Would you like to say anything?
I just, it's a privilege to represent you on the commission, and the commission's a hard-working group.
Thank you. We're glad to have you. Yay. What, no cupcakes?
I should have brought him a cupcake.
The box is in the other room. We can go run out.
I know, we'll run out and get you one.
Mr. Drake, approve secondary textbook adoption.
Yes, at our last board meeting, July 16th, you approved for public display two textbooks. One is an AP Chemistry book published by Cengage. And the other one, I'm going to hatchet the pronunciation because it's a French textbook as well. So, they were on display since the 16th and are before you- because it's a French textbook as well. So they were on display since the 16th and are before you this evening for approval.
Mrs. Flor?
I just have a question.
Do we have to move in second, and then you can talk? Yes, I need a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle.
How many people came and saw and viewed, other than the board member here?
I was going to say, I believe one, and she is to your right.
Right.
Two.
Thank you.
It's a very nice book, actually. Easy to read. Alrighty. At call, I have to tell you, I had no clue what there was in the French book. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, a 7-0. And that was it. Community input on non-agenda items.
It's summertime, so, sorry, to be sighing. This is an opportunity for the public to address non-agenda topics within the subject-mannered jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. In compliance with Board Policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board is, it's very helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Dr. Terry Welsh.
Hello, my name is Terry Welsh, and I'm president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. And this is the first time I've had the honor to address this board. And I'm going to speak about, no surprise here, Banning Ranch.
No.
And for those of you who don't know, Banning Ranch is that large 400-acre oil field on the far west side of Costa Mesa, Newport Beach. If you go down 17th Street and keep going west as far as you can go, you'll come to the entrance of Banning Ranch. Now, Banning Ranch is an active oil field. They're pumping oil right now as we speak, although not as much, less than 10% of what they did during the glory days. Now, whenever I talk about Banning Ranch, the first thing I want to tell people is that Banning Ranch is the largest parcel of unprotected coastal open space remaining in Southern California, south of Ventura. That's not to say it's the largest parcel of coastal open space. There's larger ones, Crystal Cove, State Park, Bolsochica. But these are publicly owned and protected, whereas Banning Ranch is privately owned and not protected. Its fate is yet undecided. Because Banning Ranch has served as an oil field for the last 80 years, it has escaped the dense residential development that is so characteristic of the surrounding area. And while not pristine, it has amazing habitat with endangered, threatened, and special-status species. Banning Ranch also has documented evidence of Native American people living there for over 3,000 years. Now, 20 years ago, I started the effort to preserve Banning Ranch's open space. And during that time, I've probably chaired 400 meetings. The mission of the Banning Ranch Conservancy is the preservation, acquisition, conservation, and management of the entire Banning Ranch as a permanent public open space, park, and coastal nature preserve. The overwhelming majority of Banning Ranch is owned by a partnership consisting of an oil company and some investors. But a smaller portion, 11 acres, is owned by the Newport Mesa Unified School District. This is a parcel that's right at the end of Whittier. It's a vacant area, sometimes used for storage. But on the western portion of this parcel, there's some of that rare habitat I mentioned, vernal pool habitat, burrowing owl habitat. Now, we've approached the school board in the past, but I would like to say tonight, in front of all of you, and for the record, should the Newport Mesa Unified School District ever decide to sell this surplus Banning Ranch property, the Banning Ranch Conservancy would be very interested in purchasing it and making it part of the future Banning Ranch Park and Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Ray.
Get my legs situated so they don't fall.
That's always a good thing.
Good evening. I'm Steve Ray, the executive director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. Yes, Terry and I are ganging up on you tonight a little, so I hope you'll pardon that. It's great to be here with you. I have spoken before this board together, although some of you are new since then, so welcome to the board. And as you know, Ms. Bartow, we are in your district and right next to Ms. Anderson's district. So we have a lot of things that we have looked at the school board for in the past. And I'm here tonight to make two offers to you, okay? Offer number one, as Terry mentioned, our mission statement is to preserve, acquire, conserve, and manage Banning Ranch. And at this point, I think it is safe to say that any future development on Banning Ranch, those days have ended. That's not going to happen. Banning Ranch is going to remain open space. We are now engaged in the effort to acquire Banning Ranch. It's a large task. It's 401 acres of coastal space. So it's not going to be cheap, but we're working very diligently to do that, and we have made some great progress toward that. Once we acquire the property, our intent then is to clean it up, to restore it to full native plant health. We're going to put some amenities on it for the public because we're going to open it to the public and bring people in. And we are going to establish a lot of education programs. That is our major goal there for the future of Banning Ranch is the education, environmental education. You have a requirement under the state's Environmental Education Initiative to engage in environmental education. My first offer is that we are going to, we want to help you with this and coordinate with this with our programs. We have brought in a new education director, Ms. Kay Howe, who has just been working on the development of the curriculum for the state of Hawaii. And so we have a very, very qualified person working with us to do this. And she would be here tonight, but she's off at a conference right now. You know how that goes. So we want to work with you and your staff to develop education programs between the school district and Banning Ranch that we can coordinate and work together. That's offer number one. Offer number two, on April, or I'm sorry, September 12th, you are going to be appearing before the Coastal Commission regarding the fence that you put in, and you have a permit to remove that fence before them. We're going to support that, but further beyond that, under that permit, you are required to remove the fence, and you can hire a company to remove the fence and the concrete posts and everything. But you're also required to take care of the grounds, the plants, and everything else there. We would like to offer to do that for you. We will ask you to pay for the plants, maybe, but we would, we'll bring expertise. And if I had more time, I could tell you a little bit about our expertise.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So two offers. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you very much. Charlene Ashendorf.
Good evening, President, trustees, Dr. Navarro. I am Charlene Ashendorf, Costa Mesa resident. And I serve as chair of the Cultural Arts Committee for the city. I serve proudly for the Visual and Performing Arts Commission for this district. But I'm here today representing the Parks, Arts, and Community Services Commission, which I have been recently appointed as the liaison to the district. So in that role, I hope that there will be communication with myself to the Parks Commission's for partnerships. And also, I would also like to thank the district in another successful summer of Smart Camp. That's another fine example of a partnership that our city and the district provides to our students. Finally, I'd like to invite you to two special events. One is coming up on September 6th and 7th. It's Art Venture. It's the City of Costa Mesa's signature art event. Second year, we will be hosted at Sagerstrom Center for the Arts. And it's, we have a special student section, and we have teachers who've been involved over the last five years to bring their art to this high-end event. Friday night at 7 o'clock, there will be refreshments, awards, and special entertainment. So I do hope that you will attend. And then, on a lighter note, about 81 years ago, the City of Costa Mesa had a scarecrow festival.
Oh, yeah.
And I served on the 60th Anniversary Committee to bring that, to resurrect this scarecrow festival, and it's coming back. But let me tell you what happened 89 years ago, because none of you were alive then. Well?
I feel like that sometimes.
But at that time, when the festival kicked off, there was one scarecrow that was kidnapped from Newport Boulevard. And several days later, she turned up in Tijuana. So we're hoping that doesn't happen this year. But I do want you to save the date. I have invitations to all of you. Spread the news. It will be October 19th and 20th, again at the Orange County, at Goat Hill Junction in conjunction with the Orange County Model Engineers. We hope that you'll include some teachers. Perhaps the board would love to-
Scarecrow?
Build a scarecrow, invite the students. It's a great community event.
I participated last year. It's a good idea.
Hope to see you back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charlene. That's a good idea.
Good idea. Yeah, I know. My brain is now in scarecrow mode.
I think I have some old Cub Scout scarecrows in my garage.
Thank you for not putting me on right after Terry. Thank you, Ms. Matoye. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. I have three separate subjects to address tonight. And coincidentally, I'm glad you're here, Steve and Terry. Got something for you here. The first thing I want to do is publicly thank Mrs. Yelsey for the depth of her involvement in the task force process. You're making a difference. Thank you. The second subject is just my personal recap of the meeting from last week. I raised the subject of establishing a baseline of activity so that we can determine whether we're failing or succeeding. And I got an update from Dr. Barmeister before the meeting. Thank you very much for that. I'm very pleased that that's in progress now. I also raised the subject of a contingency plan, maybe a Plan B in case Plan A doesn't work. So instead of having to go, you know, all the way, start all over again, maybe we can at least have a few things we can, we can adjust, we can try in case we're not-
That's a good idea.
And I raised a subject also of district oversight. I don't think it's clear to the task force exactly who is going to be carrying out all of these specific tactics, you know, whether it's Dr. Barmeister or on the site level. So if someone could make that clear to us, it would be greatly appreciated. I think that's a kind of a disconnect that we need. Third, in October, a group of Newport Harbor students in the Field Studies Club is traveling to Zion National Park, during which they will see, quote, "many different ecosystems in very close proximity, discuss the energy flow and inhabitants of each ecosystem, and how radically different they have developed being so close to each other." I'm a member of Costa Mesa's Fairview Park Steering Committee, and we're responsible for the preservation and protection of Fairview Park, which is one of the last urban wilderness parks in the entire country. I just want to let you know that while the trip design is worthwhile, Fairview Park offers ecosystem opportunities without the time and expense of travel. Fairview Park has 40 acres of coastal sage scrub, a freshwater marsh, a magnificent riparian habitat, and a total of five ecosystems, including seven vernal pools that are overseen by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department. There are seven plants listed as rare or endangered. You won't find them anywhere else in Orange County. And we recently welcomed the return of a burrowing owl to Fairview Park. So while the Zion trip is worthwhile, I hope that somebody can let all of the students know that we have this extraordinary world right here in our backyard. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Doughty. Dr. Doughty, sorry, I just took three years of really hard work and just messed it all up.
So, good evening again. So I have a handout for all of you, and I hope that you are able to peruse it at your leisure. And basically, I just wanted to give you a bit of an update related to this complaint because I know it was on the closed agenda items earlier today. The fundamental issue was how the benefits fund is, receives its money to go in. And what we wanted to make sure that you had were, one document is the charge that was given by our federation, and the specific item of the contract I highlighted for you so that you can reference it in Article 13.2. The second document is the district response. And what we found most troubling is that the district response in writing states that the contract has not been followed for multiple years. And so we find that to be problematic, and we hope that the board is able to give some direction so that our contract is honored, because that's a contract that you have developed with us over many years. Secondly, we were not able to reach settlement when we had a settlement meeting about a week and a half ago. So this is going to move forward through the purb process, which is the legal process. We did attempt to use the grievance process, which is an internal process, to reach resolution. That process did not go to the Level 3 when we asked for, to go to that route, so we have to use purb. We do not have binding arbitration in our contract. So therefore, when we have serious matters of concern related to our contract, we are required to go to purb if we're going to defend the contract of something of this magnitude. So it's very unfortunate that there is an increase in legal expenses, but that is the reality of where things are. So we hope that this will give you, give the attention needed by you as you give guidance to the administration. And we look forward to enforcement of our contract down the road.
Thank you. Dennis Ashendorf. I know. There wasn't 45 people before you. Maybe next month.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Ashendorf. I live in Costa Mesa. It's a pleasure speaking to you tonight. I wanted to thank the administration for its response to embarrassing, unfortunate things that have occurred in our district over the last several years, that they were fairly forthright. We held meetings. We are transparent. And the real beneficiary aren't the actual incidents, but the school board itself. Because your lives were made easier because the administration did a reasonably good job with the populace. Compare that to Garden Grove. Okay, you had a principal that received information, a video that could have been many copies of. Didn't bring it up. We then went through hell in our district under a lesser problem, I might add, than salutes of that level. Did he contact us? I'll pretend he didn't. I'll assume he didn't. Later, they have diversity training, sensitivity training mandatory for the district. Did it bring up anything like this, any focus at all? Nothing. Their administration failed on every count, okay? Ours did not. The result, though, is that their school board probably thinks the issue is about Nazis. Not at all. The issue confronting that district is now the administration. Because unless they severely discipline the principal, what I mean by that is dismissal with cause, out the door after hours, walked away where other administrators see that, and then have a little touch of fear for the future, every administrator in Garden Grove will say, hey, I can get away with anything. Geez, all I have to do is apologize and say, hey, Simon Wiesenthal Center, show on up, and I'm all good, after the fact. So by having a reasonable administration, your job becomes better, easier, because it's very doubtful whether Garden Grove will do that, which is what's necessary to be done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Navarro. Have a good day.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay. Board member reports. I remember reports. Anybody remember where I left off?
No, really.
I know. I started, but I've moved up.
Oh, I don't know. Remember, because she did beepers.
And then I'm trying to-
Ashley.
Ashley started. Haven't you started? Karen, have you started? You can start. Yay. Woohoo, you're first.
Well, just a lot has happened over the summer, and a lot has been mentioned today. So I just want to thank all the employees again who worked so hard over the summer to get everything done, from the summer school, which was fantastic, to all the projects that went on. And it was nice having a little bus tour of the projects over the summer, including Estancia. And we even saw where the new theater is planned to go, which was not the intent initially. But architects come in sometime and have vision, obviously, that's why they're paid the big bucks, to find a place that no one ever thought of. So it's all very exciting. It was great to see the Cronodelmar Fields. It was great to see the Corona Del Mar Fields like-
Leveled.
-raised, leveled. Construction is starting there. I think everybody at the school is super excited about that, so I look forward to that over the next year. We went to Davis, saw a lot of new just cosmetic projects, and learned at that point that all the lights in the district were replaced this summer with LED lights, which is fabulous, I think. They require less maintenance, and they look better, and they're easier to read, see under, so that's terrific. But anyhow, all that was great. And then some of us, we were all invited, but some of us attended yesterday at Costa Mesa for the teachers. Their zone had Michelle Borba, who wrote Unselfie Common Speak, and she talked about how kids today don't have empathy and what we need to do, and was a fabulous speaker and gave some great examples to the teachers who were in attendance, little things to do in their classrooms that could help. Some of her research has taken her around the world, I found really fascinating. So it was, it was a great event, but just, you know, simple things like a teacher having H and H, you either get a hug or a handshake when you walk in the classroom. And it just reminded me that there was a teacher at CDM who was retired. He still comes to sub or watch basketball games all the time, Dave Seizer. And my daughter, who's now in her thirties, had him for math. He was a math teacher. And if you ask her of all the teachers she had in high school, who was her favorite? And it was Dr., Mr. Seizer, not just because he taught math well, but because he shook the hand of everybody who walked in that room every day. And that's what she remembers. And I think what these empathy and what we're trying to do is create that kind of atmosphere in the schools. In fact, Michelle, in her speech, said to these teachers, what do you want your kids to remember on the last day of school about you? And I think that's the kind of thing we want to have, where kids remember something really special about their teachers. And it usually has nothing to do with what they learned in the classroom. Hopefully, they're learning a lot, but it's more what they bring emotionally and socially to them. So I, it was really special. Anyway, that's my report.
Mrs. Black?
I too had a great summer touring, and I actually got to go with Mrs. Barto's son to visit Costa Mesa at summer school, and, and it was, after, not being flip about it because he asked some interesting questions, you know, and it was really great. But also, other, you know, tours and visits as everyone else. But I, in particular, want to thank the city of Newport Beach because they really rallied around Ensign's project, you know, with the H, you know, I don't know why you guys call it, but the AC, no, I call it the air conditioning projects. But before that, we had some, you know, different transportation issues. The curb in front was painted, and so it kind of forced visitors and staff to park in, go in, push into the neighborhoods, and became a daily phone call for me, which is great. And, and I have to say, Principal Shaka and Dr. Navarro and Mr. Holcomb and the city transportation and city manager, great, everybody worked together, and so keeping our fingers crossed that will be done before schools that we've been promised that. And then we need to tear down the garages at Ensign, so I know that Mr. Holcomb's not looking at me right now because he knows I'm gonna, he's looking for a date.
I am listening.
I'm kidding. I know you're listening.
You're a stork.
No, but you've been such a great sport and so helpful. I really appreciate that. But anyway, and look forward to everybody safely making it back, safe and sound, and seeing our little kids, kiddos in school. So, thank you.
Mrs. Flor?
Yeah, I am just amazed at our communities, from our staffs to our families. We've had a number of tragedies within our school district, and we just had a recent one with a recent graduate from Corona Del Mar. And yet, every single time a tragedy occurs, this district pulls together. This district, our staff pulled together when we lost Tony Vassi from Back Bay, they all, we pulled together. Our families pulled together, and we offer that support and, and comfort that is so desperately needed. So I really am just amazed at that. Again, you know, our staffs need to be commended, especially in the maintenance and operations. What you have done is just amazing, and the unbelievable part is that, been on a couple of the campuses, they're clean at the end of the, you know, it's like, they do construction, and then everything is put away nice and neat for the next day, so it doesn't look like it's been trashed, there's not crap all over the place. You know, you're, the people that we have hired have done an amazing job of respecting the site and also respecting the community within their, within their working so that there's a, there's a, it's a nice, just my compliments to that.
If I could say, Mrs. Flor, thank you very much for that, and it is indeed a lot of hard work that's well earned by both our facilities and maintenance and operations departments. We have gotten more done in maintenance and operations this summer with Mr. Bidnick, who I think is still standing in the back.
He just walked out.
I know. Missed all the good stuff. He's gonna have to watch the tape.
Missed us saying the nice things about him, but, you know, he got here in January and focused on getting as much done as could possibly get done with last year's remaining budget, and then focused to meet a pretty sizable challenge this summer. And as you've seen, a lot of wonderful things are happening at our schools, and the two departments, facilities and maintenance, are working better together every day, and better than any of the times that I, since I've been here, which is wonderful, see them continuing to communicate well. And IT, all three of them are working more closely than ever before, and if not already, pretty soon, I would say, among the best that I've ever worked with anywhere. It's very good.
It's, it's just fabulous. And again, with Charlene mentioning the SMART program, unbelievable. That program has just grown, and as well as I'm looking forward to what's going to be happening with the theater program at Corona Del Mar. They've had a wonderful summer theater with the East Bluff Community Program, and that's just gonna get bigger. But again, a lot of effort was taken between our district and the partnership that we have, and hopefully, we can expand that. I think the important thing that we all took away from Michelle Borba also at that meeting was that kids as young as five years old are entering our school district with mental health issues and trauma. That's scary, that our five-year-olds, and that, one thing that she really talked about was that we need to teach our kids, actively teach and model mindfulness and empathy, and empathy being the key, because kids don't know what empathy is anymore, and that we need to actively teach it and, and role model it. So that was fabulous. And the last one is, kudos to the Summer Leadership Program. Unbelievable, John. That program has, I've seen that program go up and down, but now what you're offering those, the high school students in terms of the multicultural and appreciating their, their actual history and their culture, it was just phenomenal to have a conversation with those students and the teachers. Who knew that we had a, a math teacher, a fabulous math teacher, oh, a science teacher at Costa Mesa High School, who is fully bilingual in Spanish, I mean, and he was teaching these, these students a great role model, one, and was able to communicate and really instill, and it's a great partnership with the Cal State Fullerton people. Unbelievable, and I hope that that type of a program can be embedded throughout, throughout our schools, because the celebration of, of culture, we had, there was a couple of Russian students, some Chinese students, Hispanic students, there was a Polish. It was just a phenomenal graduation. It was just fabulous.
One of the teachers said to me she felt guilty taking the money, so I wrote down her name.
But again, just, just phenomenal, and just kudos to our district because we've done some great things this year, and it's all thanks to you all.
Mrs. Snell?
Hello, Dolly. So we went to see the summer play, Hello, Dolly. It was, it's a little strange to see little kids doing Hello, Dolly, but it was, it was good. And actually, I'm embarrassed to say, I thought I had seen that play before. I hadn't, so it was very exciting. I didn't know what was gonna happen, didn't know how it ended, so it was very good. Annette is here. I just want to thank Ms. Franco for putting out all the information you have put out, the principal announcements, the pictures were great, the stuff about the, the board, the summer programs, the Stay Connected cards, great, and most recently, the highlights of what Newport Mesa offers. So you've been working hard, and, and I'm just sharing everything. It's really good. Oh, really? Okay. Okay, we'll pass it on.
Under your leadership-
It was very, very good.
Yay to Adriana.
Yeah, I'm loving it. And, and Mr. Ray, those are great opportunities, and I hope we can, I don't know enough about the details. It's always kind, I know we're supposed to take the fence down, and we've been talking about that, but it would be great to meet, or you guys meet, and I'm not high enough to meet with, like the president or the vice president, and, because I would be interested in, and that's very interesting. We haven't really discussed it since the new board members have been on board, so thank you for coming.
Would you do me a favor? I don't know where I went, probably on vacation. In my mind, would you repeat what you want us to talk about?
Oh, the Boeing, the Banning Ranch.
Thank you.
Boeing.
Hello.
The Banning Ranch.
I'm starting. I said, I said, school's starting, and I'm going on a vacation.
Mrs. Snell?
Yes.
You know, I, Mrs. Yelsey didn't mention it, but we've done things with, over at Banning Ranch. Do you want to maybe recap?
Oh, good.
Actually, the Costa Mesa High School, AP Marine Science, and Estancia, I think, Environmental Science, both have used that facility in the past for their research.
Yes. Yeah, and, but I was really speaking to the offers that they made. Yeah, and-
And I know Whittier goes there on field trips all the time.
Absolutely. But I was sort of speaking about what they brought up tonight.
Oh.
Okay. What else did I want to say? Oh, and kudos to Emma Noe. I think we all see a huge difference in what we're getting back in, in updates, and I look forward to my tour. I think Martha's coming with me. I don't know, Ashley coming? Yeah. So we're looking forward to our little tour as well. So thanks for all the hard work you've all done all summer while some of us have been playing.
Yeah.
More than others.
More than others. No bitterness here.
We're adopted.
Yeah.
Mrs. Barto?
Okay, so I went on the bus tour of the facilities. That was so great. I was really impressed by the attention to detail down to the, and probably because I have young boys, the carpet by the door has a two-step, like, extra stretchy carpet, like, scratchy carpet, so no dirt gets in the actual classroom within two steps, and I need that in my house. It's amazing. But just every, every detail was thought of, and with children in mind, and I really appreciated that. Watching the HVAC come along, I want to second how clean it is. Last week, my kids asked if they could go back to school, so we went and rode around the, their school, figuring we would see some air conditioning, and it was so quiet. There were a ton of people there, there were a ton of cars, but they were all working, and it was so quiet that the kids are like, oh, is there even air conditioning? And you could see people working in the classroom, but it was so well-contained and cleaned. That was really nice to see. I wasn't able to go to the Unselfie talk. I really wanted to, so I bought the book, so it's on my, on my nightstand. And additionally, I went to the, an MTSS training with Ms. Anderson in Long Beach. It was really great, a lot to see so much of the staff there, too, and it was really well done and put on. I finished two of my Masters in Governance.
Congratulations.
So we're checking them off the list. It was good. And then I attended the tour of the Summer Language Academy with one of my children, who did have some really interesting questions, if I do say so myself. And then the professional development was well done. My, probably my favorite highlight was the new teacher lunch and meeting some teachers who have been TOSs, and they're gonna be in the classroom, and people who are just brand-new to the district, particularly in Mandarin, and how excited they were to get started and work in our district. So that was really great to see.
Yeah, another one. Ocean View is not speaking to us, again.
And, and it was great because I got to try some of the cafeteria food that our kids eat, and there were a couple things that my kids have asked me to make, and I had no idea what they're talking about from the description, so I tasted them. I'm like, okay, now I can, now cheese pockets, I know exactly what they eat. And, and then just wanted to second my interest in working with Mr. Ray and the Banning Ranch Conservancy.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I also attended the Multi-Tier System Support Conference in Long Beach. It was phenomenal. I'm so excited about the way that our district is going to incorporate more social, emotional learning. We have so many kids that they come to school, and there's so much going on at home, and they're not able to learn unless we're really getting to know them and care for them well. And so I love the know my face, know my name, know my story. I think that's so important, and to have that across the district with all of our teachers is huge. I also loved the leadership training for certificated management, that they were able to do the implicit bias training and becoming an ally, the conversations that I heard, and just what was written down, and the participatory factor of that. I think a lot of people learned a lot, and it was really amazing and wonderful to see. And I loved, like, at my group, we had people from all different levels, so to have principals, to have board members, to have administrators, all having different conversations was great. And Russell had a section, too, where people were able to share about their heritage, and I think that's one of the things that is so important, that like, we need to continue to have those conversations so people really get to know each other on a deeper level. So thank you for doing that. And then also, the October second, the Orange County Health Department and the city of Costa Mesa are having Walk to School Day, and so that's something, too, that there's a lot of efforts in our city to get the word out that kids can have safe ways to walk to school and just get out. We have so many kids that we want them to be more active and not, you know, be playing video games all day. So October second is that day, and then I'm also very excited, Banning Ranch is near and dear to my heart. I live in that neighborhood, and so I would love to see and hear more opportunities for us to partner with you. So thank you.
Ms.?
Did we start with you?
My turn. Yay.
We're gonna have to get Charlene.
I guess maybe I should drink caffeine a little bit longer. The coughing is a little worse than I thought.
You're okay.
Smart Camp was fabulous. I went to every musical performance that we had, and as Mr. Fitzpatrick always reminds us, look what we can do when we have your children four days a week for four hours a day at minimum. Some of them were there for six because they were our SMART program and in Smart Camp afterwards. And he's absolutely right. It's phenomenal what the kids do and how they perform, and you're just so proud. And I was at the first one we had, and it was really exciting that Beginning Strings did not play Hot Cross Buns, not that it doesn't serve a purpose, but it's- Or Twinkle Twinkle. Yes, and it's, it's almost like going to see a live production of The Music Man at the very end, looking at the parents in the back of the room, are all but going, that's my boy. It's so exciting, and, but they're so good. So that was wonderful. I presented a class act. Memento from our, the Pacific Symphony did a class act evening when, at the Performing Arts Center, at the Pacific Amphitheater on Star Wars. They show the movie and they play all the music. So it's, it's just fascinating. They also gave out lightsabers. So to see, yes, may I hold it up because I didn't keep one? They, they also hold, held up lightsabers, and the audience got no instruction, and it was just fascinating that, in the dark, in this entire theater, all the lightsabers are dark, not the audience is dark, all of a sudden, Luke goes vroom, and everybody's lightsaber went vroom, and all these red, green, blue, yellow lightsabers in the audience. As soon as Luke's went away, they all went away. And it was just so fun to watch. And that's the type of program that class act brings to our, our school district. Our partnership is in four different schools. They encourage us to have more schools participate, so, and I know that they love to not have them all be in Newport Beach schools, so we need to help find a way to make sure that we can get some more of our schools in Costa Mesa. Are they in Victoria? Yes, they're in Victoria. Victoria was a charter member. Yeah. And the other three schools are in Corona Del Mar, Newport Beach, and Newport Coast, and we lost-
And we lost our other Costa Mesa school. So I know they'd love to have another Costa Mesa school. So we can look into that. I am really excited to hear and meet officially all of our new principals and was comforted in hearing how their goals are to build relationships because the, it, that's where it starts. That's where the leadership starts. So well done. Just officially, Walk to School Day is also on the day of our State of the Schools din, breakfast?
It'll be a busy morning. I think we'll be up at 6:00.
Yes. Yes, it's o dark 30.
Are you walking?
And we have our all-staff luncheon tomorrow at Costa Mesa High School. The district received a letter from the Orange County Department of Education on August 15th. I, actually, I did, and you did as the president, thanking us for our submission of our LCAP plan and that it met approval. But the second paragraph is the one I wanted to say. The regard the district holds for the LCAP development process is evident in the effect that Newport Mesa Unified School District has put forth in providing a highly transparent plan summary included a detailed dashboard data explanation. The Newport Mesa School District included many promising initiatives such as utilizing intervention systems to provide learning opportunities that promote the holistic development of all students and continue to provide social, emotional, and mental health services, including social, bless you, social workers, drug interventions, and psychologists to address the social, emotional, behavioral needs to promote student and family well-being. We would like to extend our thanks to your staff for the exceptional effort invested in developing the LCAP and for its timely submission. And that just goes to show how, yay us. But, but we truly have embedded social, emotional. It's not this department and this department and this department. We know we bleed all over each other and it goes together. And that's, whole people have all of these things. So I'm just very, very proud of us. And I look forward to an exceptionally exciting opening that I won't be here for. Because I'm whisking away one of our former principals and trying to keep her as far away from the school so she doesn't feel sad that she's not here. Oh darn, someone has to do it. Yeah. Alrighty. Do we have any crop updates?
I do.
Okay.
We are back in session. Most, the majority, all of, well, all of the other four districts that are in our, in our JPA are back in session. I want to thank personally Dr. Navarro. The five superintendents of the schools have met and we have adopted a bridge agreement. And we are well on our way to a long-term agreement with the understanding that we've come up with, the superintendents have actually worked this out, that in the past, we've had a hybrid system. We've had just our district employees teaching ROP classes. We've had ROP contracting with the district to teach ROP classes. And then we've had teachers that are ROP hired and ROP teachers. And we are eliminating that in the near future, the one-year agreement, and that there will only be ROP teachers, they'll be teaching ROP classes. So there won't be a hybrid, with the understanding that it's about a $27,000 cost per section, which is mid-range because some of our real highly-technical school classes are much higher than that. But Dr. Navarro and the other four, four districts seem to be comfortable with that concept. And then it will be, and we'll have the ultimate flexibility of which we're really moving towards a service, a service model for the bell-scheduled classes. We haven't, we're still dealing with the after-bell scheduled classes, but looking at it from an ADA point of view and, and working that out. So I really want to thank Dr. Navarro because that's gonna be a major, major shift in terms of funding.
Legislative update, Miss, were you done?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let us let you breathe. I thought, I saw I was taking advantage. Legislative update, Mrs. Barto.
So August 12th was when things are back in session. The last I saw, the charter school bills that we looked like, looked at, where we were interested in, have gone back to the floor. And I don't know that they've passed yet. They still have some more revisions. They're very, very different than when we started watching them in the first place. Not necessarily in the direction that we would like. There's less local control written in. So I'll keep you updated as stuff goes through.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on that.
Okay.
So can you, can you track us? I, I think one, based on my meetings, my attending the meetings at the Orange County Department of Ed, there's been a lot of traction on the Healthy Kids Act and what, what school districts are doing and what they're not doing and what the leeway is. And so could we get an update on the Healthy Kids Act? There's a lot of misinformation that has been promulgated out there. And I think we need to be really on top of it because there's a lot of, the things that I heard at the Orange County Department of Ed from some parents was like, are you kidding? I don't, that's not in, that's not in it. So if you could just get that. And then the other one that's of major concern is the ethnic studies that's been pulled, that's been polled because of how, how horribly written it was and how, frankly, it was really pretty biased.
For two years, yes.
It was terrible.
It was, it was, and it's, it was supposed to be adopted and it was just horrible. And so I think we need to really, we really need to have a watch. It hasn't been abandoned. It has not been abandoned.
Two years.
No, I know.
It's a, well, it's, they approved, they approved it, but this was the curriculum. And so now it's been pulled.
I thought it was being rewritten.
It's gonna be rewritten. But at the same time, I think we really need to pay attention to it because it will impact our kids because it, they, they really want to add another graduation requirement. So where does that fit into, where does that fit into?
Can we have one more?
Yeah. How can we add another class, another graduation, more units, and take, and basically taking away, we're taking away electives from our students. So I think we just need to, just put it on our file and just keep monitoring what it is because it was pretty, it was pretty poor written, poorly, poorly written. So.
I think it was outright terrible.
Okay. Yeah, well, and we're on top of that.
Yeah.
I could answer the Healthy Kids Act if you wanted to know the answer to that one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good. Thanks. I can tell.
So the law as it passed is unchanged, but the framework was recommended and it's still recommended. It hasn't gone any further than that. But a lot of districts have moved to adopt that framework.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
That would be really good except there's just two more reports.
Okay.
Sorry. Costa Mesa Youth Sports Met and there's, yeah, you missed one, I know. And I, by the way, I'm gonna be gone for the next one. So you two have to go. Thank you. And it was again, another wonderful meeting. And we had some discussion with the city people about where things stood and how this was stopping and that was stopping because we had our, you had our, right before that. So it was, we had representatives there that were talking about that. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Brain fades. See, it's terrible. And basically, we have another meeting. There's a lot of inactivity because our fields are downtime. And they really want, we, they were so, we're so excited and hopeful and then we're not. And so that was our update. It was another wonderful meeting. And the cooperation, you know, like, can we help you with this? No, we'll help you with that. Because we have, the Chargers left and we have this weekend, I think, or was it last weekend, a huge soccer tournament at Costa Mesa High School on the, it's not at the high school. It's at Jack Hammat Field. It's this weekend. Yeah. And it's ginormous. And so there, we're looking forward to when the fields get their extra parking because that will be helpful for them. And did we have a schools foundation report that met on eight, August 8th?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening to what you said.
See, it's not just me. August 8th. There was a...
School Foundation.
School Foundation?
Yes, there was. Hmm.
And you, probably the breakfast.
October 2nd.
Yes, the breakfast. They, we talked about the breakfast, the final plans for the breakfast. You're absolutely right. I, you know, I wrote notes, but I, I, it was so early that I forgot that I even had that meeting. Yes.
We got our invitations and I just want to let our newest board members know that we all get our own ticket because it's our own donation. Because there's some things we're invited to that are part of our responsibilities to go to. And this is one of our things that we do ourselves.
Because all the teach, all the schools.
All the schools do.
Everybody pays.
Yes.
And it's at a, it's back at Estancia.
It's back at Estancia.
Because Corona Del Mar's working. Because it used to, it should go to...
No, they rotate. It was at Corona Del Mar last, last year.
No, it was at Costa Mesa last year.
Okay. Anyway.
It was at CDM last year.
Yeah.
It's time, so this must...
It's at Estancia.
This must be the fifth one.
Okay.
Would you say?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's back.
And it's $32 because we have 32 schools. So I thought that was always a nice thing to say. And then, Mrs. Snell moved for adjournment. Do we have an agreement?
I'll second that.
We're adjourned.